Good afternoon. Hello, Mike. We'll just let you go. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Mike Moss, Public Services Director, along with Susan Janis, our county engineer. She's going to start off today with continuing our conversation about the letter she brought to your attention last week to US DOT. I think she might have sent you a draft late last week.
So I did. I sent you all a draft on Sunday, I believe is the day I sent it out. And the comments are due today, so I kind of wanted to get what changes, if any, you guys wanted to make. If you wanted to add in that last sentence of, please feel free to contact us if you want them to contact you, or if you want them to contact me. And if you guys are going to sign it. Emily in our office has gone through and formatted it. She was just going to put it on whichever letterhead we wanted and send it to Kelly if you guys were going to sign it. Any comments?
Yeah, the bridge work to the end of the letter.
Yes. So I added the bridge and I added emergencies, the ER funding, the emergency bypass, and then the Lewis and Clark Bridge.
Will it make any difference to them between us signing it or you signing it?
I don't know.
If they were to contact anybody, you'd be the one to have the answers for them, right?
Yes. So you'd like me to go ahead and send it out with my signature?
I'm good with it.
Sure. Sounds good. I'll get Emily to finalize it and we'll get that uploaded to their site today. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number two, the north parking lot, the schedule there. So as you know, we've been under construction, the north parking lot here at the administration building. This Friday, we're going to ditch the east side between the parking lot and Wazoo Campus, Extension Campus, and where we took the white fence down and run conduit to get ready for light poles on that side of the parking lot. Next Friday, we'll be cleaning and prepping the lot, getting ready for paving, getting rid of all the old moss and get it ready for paint on the curbs, just cleaning up some extra debris that was left over from the stump grinding we did. September 5th, 6th, and 7th, we'll be grinding and paving that parking lot with our third party, which is Lakeside, was a low bid on that project. So in a few weeks from now, we'll be paving that and then immediately after that, we'll stripe it and replace the curb stops, also place the ballot box with the tax payment boxes right now in the corner. It's going to be placed back where originally was that. Then we're going to place big planters with greenery and trees in the middle. That'll happen later this fall. So a lot of work coming up the next few weeks, but at least the paving will be done the weekend after Labor Day, make it better before any rains come to this area.
And these are these deep rooted trees that weren't going to tear it up again?
No, our plan is to do the shrubbery and the planters because we're planning like every three to four years, maybe replacing that if it outgrows those planters. Or if we put trees in that area, we just figured we might have issues down the roads. We're just going to have tall shrubbery in the place of those planters. They're going to be oversized planters, I mean, large, large ones out there that people aren't going to pack off to get some greenery back there. Originally, we thought about putting trees on the east side where we're going to put in between the light poles, but that's just going to cause us issues down the road, blocking light, and we really don't want to go that direction. We also thought about cutting diamonds in shape in the middle of the parking lot between the two spots where people walk to add trees that go straight down, and that's always an option down the road if we have issues of people stealing shrubs from our planters. Initially, we're going to try this direction, just so we have some greenery back out there.
Much as I like trees, I think that's a good idea. They end up being messy and create long-term liabilities and constant upkeep on those things.
Correct.
And they make things like shade.
There's pluses and minuses, we know that, for sure. So we'll get an email out tomorrow to all staff so they're aware of the schedule that's coming up, but all the work will be done on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays where we have limited staff here.
Do we have any idea where we're at with our concrete falling off the building project?
Yeah, Savannah probably has a little better update. I think she's been working with our engineering team on that.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Savannah with Public Works. So yes, we just signed Ed's proposal, actually yesterday, to get started, Ed is our engineering firm, to get started using a varying degree of experts in facade repair and maintenance. And so we'll be moving forward with that project. Actually, they've already started to send out groups to mobilize to come and take a look what that entails. Sorry, I wasn't super prepared to talk about it. But what that entails is we've got envelope specialists, so they're going to be looking at, you know, those gaps between the original facade and any repairs that have been added on to. We suspect, and so do they, that the pieces that are falling off are prior repairs, that water has gotten behind and is just pushing them out. The building, the south side again, is like the original face of the building. This side we're seated on is actually the renovated add-on. You can see it in the hallway, actually with the crack line and settling right out here. This whole atrium was part of the add-on, the exterior of the commissioner's room with those windows that look out facing this way, that's actually the old exterior of the building. So over the years, we've made a lot of add-ons and repairs, and I think we're kind of starting to realize some of the after effects of that and what happens when water intrusion comes in, anyway. And so we'll have the envelope specialists and the architects and also the masonry repair guys here. So that's all moving forward. You might start seeing more workers out on the south side of the building.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Other items that we've started maintenance-wise before we moved to number three was the ivy removal. We started the northeast corner of the Hall of Justice. They started that project today. It already looks a lot better there. So we're seeing how that works out because once we pull that ivy off, we've got to see what we're up against because it's a dirt bank at an angle. That one there, that corner there actually has a big hole that someone's dug in there years ago that used it for a shelter. So now we're going to have to fill that hole in and then figure out what we're going to do for, if it could be bark or mulch or what we're going to do to overlay that area or...
Not concrete.
Not concrete.
We do have dredge boils you can fill the hole in with, too.
Yes.
And they drain well.
Just saying.
Plant nettles.
One thought we had was, we might try on a different side first, though, is actually take the dirt off the wall there and actually get, instead of a slope, have it more of a flat area that's easy to, if we want to plant grass or mulch or something. But we don't know what we're going to find against that dirt wall that's been there for 50 years, so maybe it's holding up the building. So keep it in play. But this first corner is, it's really growing up the exterior of that structure, trees, so that's all getting removed at this point, so. And this weekend, we also washed the windows at HOJ, all the way up to the, other than the jail, old jail, but it looks a lot better at that location now and had some comments already. I don't know how many years it's been since the window's been washed, but there was a lot of debris and also spider webs and stuff that's grown over the years there, so. So start to make some more improvements of that structure. LT-1 extreme heat closure, number three. So this weekend, we're expecting quite a bit of heat again in the area. We've had large crowds at LT-1. Over the last few weekends, fairly large clouds where we had to have the sheriff's deputy help move people out of there because they've been trying to camp overnight, which is not allowed at that location, including having campfires out there. So we thought with the weather, they're predicting this weekend in the mid 90s through probably Monday or Tuesday. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll close down LT-1 through the weekend. Do we get a better handle of how to handle these large crowds at that location? We've asked the sheriff's office that they can help us patrol that area on the weekends, especially later in the evenings when people are supposed to be out of that area before nightfall and they're camping. So they said they'd assist if possible. So we've had staff go out there because I've had neighbors complain about the traffic out there, and we've had staff almost get ran over by ATVs and motorcycles. It's getting a little dangerous out there. If you don't mind, I'll just give you one picture real fast of what we've been seeing out there.
They moved them off all the other dredge spoils, so they're all coming out there. Maybe you should strip it off and charge.
Or make them take a five-gallon bucket of spoils every time they leave.
Take a gallon of leave there. So we have no, you know, issues. We love having people ride ATVs and motorcycles in that area, but a couple of weekends ago, there was about 80 vehicles out there on the river, playing, riding through the river, camping, using it as, of course, there's no restroom facilities out there. Later that evening, we tried to remove people because you can see there's tents out there, there's trailers out there saying this is, it's not a campground, you got to be out. And got law pushback, and that's what we had to call the sheriff deputy to help assist. They brought a couple deputies out that evening. It's been that way for a few weekends this summer. Like I said, with the high temperatures this weekend, we don't want this to continue because right across the river, there's all, that's all private property, there's people's houses, and just one issue with some wind and some flame, we could have some issues in that area. So we'll play pretty cautious this weekend. We're kind of some game plans and maybe make it a better location for people to ride, and I'm going to work with Alyssa. She has some great ideas, but we'll present to you those in the next couple of weeks when she's back in town. We hate closing it down on these warm weekends because there's great river access, but we love to have people ride, but it's not uncommon for us to close it down once or twice a year. I believe we also closed it down this year at the Fourth of July weekend. Any questions? All right. And so we're sending out a press release today, say we're closing it for the weekend also, just FYI.
Okay. I'll move on to Milik. I'd like to stay on the agenda every week that we're here at least and just give the board updates as they come. We did start construction this week. It was pretty quiet. Hopefully you guys didn't hear anything because I didn't, which is how we like it. So we've started off, we've mobilized the contractors, and we had a loud weekend a couple of weekends ago. We're going to have another loud weekend coming up. I think it's the weekend of September 5th. They'll be doing some core drilling, so we're going to be letting departments know. It will be over the weekend, but still, we'd have some 24-hour departments there. Some of the big milestones that are coming up that you guys should be aware of is, of course, that power outage because that entails an entire complete replacement of our current electrical panels. So that's, that's a big milestone, and we're getting it knocked out really early on. After that will be the HVAC install, starting in the basement. And so that's, I think, when we'll start to hear more, you know, more feedback. Hopefully, our weekly meetings that we're on, sometimes daily, will alleviate some of that. But we still are in kind of a planning phases with some departments. It's been challenging to make sure that we can fit some of their accommodations into the space we actually have available. So that has been an ongoing challenge that we're trying to work through with those departments. But the first department that will be moving is DEM, so they're going to be moving in the next week and a half to two weeks will be the first kind of big move in that building, which it's not a big move, it's three people, but for us, it's big. I think we'll find a lot of the, hopefully, we'll find some of those problems early on so that we can identify them for the larger departments as they move. I wanted to let you guys know that we're planning a construction kickoff. I don't know that we'll do it, actually, your preference. They're proposing doing it kind of like an online Teams meeting. I didn't know if the board preferred more of like our stakeholder meetings where we have, we're in person, we have people mingling, but that, we're looking at next week or the week following, depending on if it's virtual or in person. So do you guys have a preference for a construction kickoff? So do you guys have a preference for a construction kickoff? Any thoughts? Okay, I'll go ahead with virtual and we can do it sooner, too. I think I went over everything that I had for Millic. I don't get to do this often, but since I have the mic, I might be getting too much credit for managing this this project because I talk about it a lot, but I have a lot of people that have made it so much easier, this daunting, right, this daunting task. And so IT, Mac McCoy's been great, Jordan Cole, awesome, Mike Bamford, they're on every single call. Like, it's, it's been great. And then our facilities team, of course. It's my Oscar speech. I'll do it when I'm done with the project, too, hopefully. Kelly and then also, of course, Aaron, Brian, and our facilities team, Jason Thomas is boots on the ground. He's over there. His office is in the old jail. That tells you anything. So the amount of staff we have on this project and the amount of help we have is, I've been like, it makes me feel good because we were scared about our ability to keep up. And I think we're, I think for now, we're doing a great job. So thank you for providing that support from a board perspective, too.
Hey, you can't take away our one throat to choke.
How'd you, how'd you know? I just named all the people with me. But no, seriously, like, I get, I get credit for it, but really, I'm just the voice. And we've got a lot of people in the background that are all there with me through every single meeting. So I just wanna make sure that I, I spread the love there.
You're gonna flip that page over and tell us who's on the other list?
Nope. They know who they are. Just kidding. Anyway, that's my Millic update, unless you guys have any questions or.
When we tried the trial run on the power outage, we, there was no issues, right? Everything went smooth?
Right. I mean, I hate to be so absolute and say there's no issues, but for the most part, right, we were able to gauge how much, how much fuel we use. We had it running for 11 hours straight, which is longer than a business day, but we wanted to make sure fuel was actually very reasonable as far as how much we used. We were able to do a power audit. So what generators were powering in that building, now we know. We put up some temporary lighting, like restrooms and hallways, just so people could use those, those areas. Actually, yeah, it went really well. I know IT had a couple hiccups. Nothing big, nothing major that got on my radar to try to run down for like UPS battery backups and stuff like that. But for the most part, I'm glad we did it, and I think we learned some stuff, and it wasn't all that bad, so. Okay. I'll go ahead and transition if there's no other questions to our capital improvement and preservation 2026 submissions. And so that presentation that I handed out earlier, just a quick reminder for the public and the board. The county has a policy for the capital and tenant improvement projects. Departments are able to provide individual submissions to this committee once a year. The committee gets together, reviews them, ranks them, and brings them to the board for discussion and approval or not approval. This, this phase is for review of the board and discussion. The board can dictate what projects move forward into next year's budget. And so this is just a recap of all of our submissions. I try to keep it pretty high level. But if you guys have questions about the projects, I've been pretty involved, so I hope I can answer those. And if not, I can find somebody who can. These are in order of their rank. And so we had all these, we had five, we had more than five, but the five that made it through are are here today. And we have them ranked one to five, one being the first and best project. Five not necessarily being the worst, but it'll be the last one that we move forward to depending on budget. So the first one was submitted by the jail. It is for an estimated project cost of $42,000. I don't want to read word for word off this slide, but essentially, the current medical facility at the jail is not adequate enough for more than one person to be in there for treatment. It also isn't adequate enough to have secure storage for certain medical supplies and pharmaceuticals, which is directly tied to some funding opportunities that they could have, I think with Medicaid, which we're not currently able to qualify for because of our setup. And so their request is to actually take what's currently there, and you can see that nice, they did that for us, which I actually appreciate. But the current setup and what's outlined in red is what we would be reconfiguring. So we're not actually building any walls or tearing any walls down. We're doing some reconfiguration of office space, and the the primary costs will be plumbing and electrical to accommodate, you know, a sink in the exam room. We'll be using one of the smaller storage areas, which is titled O56 on here, as a secure storage for medical supplies. Overall, this project was ranked number one by the group. It's the first project we would tackle if the board decides to approve it and move it forward in the budget.
So whatever changes would be made would make us make it to where we could qualify for this additional funding, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding, and my understanding is very limited, but that was what was discussed in their presentation. Their funding opportunities, because currently they're not able to provide XYZ. By doing this, they would be able to or would be open to other opportunities for funding. You know, not to mention, that's one piece of it. The other side of it is that they just need more than one exam room for the entire jail, you know? Would you guys like me to move on to the second? Okay. So the second, number two, oh, and of course, here's this, this is all the current setup. I'm sorry if you go through the slides. And then their proposed redraw of what, what that office space would now look like if we were able to make these changes.
Are they gonna somehow have common storage for the pharmaceutical, for the, yeah, medical supplies?
Can you say the first part of that? I didn't catch the first part.
Are, between those two, can you go back one slide? Are they gonna somehow have shared access to medical supplies for those two rooms? Are they gonna each have to have their own storage for medical?
They can have shared. So that storage area there is the shared storage for both exam rooms. It has to be secure, is I think, part of it, and we have to provide a certain amount of space for, and I could be, hopefully, I'm not making this up. It's my, my memory from the presentation, but I believe they have to have a certain, you know, amount of storage available. It has to be secured. It has to meet certain requirements of some kind for safety and security.
That, in the top left corner, that hash mark room with the plumbing going through it is what's?
I believe that's the bathroom on the other side of the hallway. So we wouldn't be, what all we're doing, we're going to be accessing the plumbing on the other side of that wall, but that's staying a restroom. It's not part of the proposed plan for a new layout.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, I think we're good, Kelly. Go to the next. Okay, so this jury office that we're calling, this was a submission by the clerk's office, Stacy and her team. Currently, they use this office space in this picture right here, essentially for any jury inquiries. So jurors that are assigned to be on trial or jurors who are called. If you've, if you've gone to jury duty recently, you kind of all gather up and then you get in a line and you have a number. And anyway, this office here is really where all of that happens as far as organization and communication. What they would like to do is actually split this room in half and add essentially a private kind of like office area and a customer service window. I think you'll get a better idea of that if we can go to, well, this next slide's gonna be current pictures. So where, you know, use your imagination. But if you look at the first picture with the white desk, you can see kind of where the room's split in half with that, the line on the wall. I think it's a conduit, exterior conduit. That's essentially where we'd cut the room in half. And that side would, would be where a staff would be, would be placed. And then we would have, the other half of the room would actually be access for the public to complete their questionnaires. We would have, they'd have their computer, their kiosk there for use for people to research, fill out documents online. And then if you see in this picture to the right, we would actually, where the pew is located, have a customer service window. And so what that does is it provides an added layer of security because right now, you're walking right into somebody's office to do any business related to a juror. Also, that hallway is right, leading right into courtroom three. So all the traffic there, when court's going on, it's very noisy. And there's no way out if you're a staff person. You've got one way in and one way out. And so their proposal is to split the room in half, add a customer service window, and provide a lot more customer service that way and private space. So if you go to this next picture, they did a cool little proposed layout, and it's very, it's very simple. You know, splitting the wall, adding a customer service window. And, you know, it's, for the requests, it's pretty reasonable as far as cost goes.
So it says add a door and a window.
Their original, you know, when people do submissions, we don't vet it as far as facility goes. After they do their submissions and we review it and get cost estimates, we kind of put our own recommendations in place. Providing a door slash service window on that exterior wall into the hallway isn't, it's not very practical or cost effective. And so adding a service window is much easier, requires, you know, less demo, less work. And building that new wall, because it's really, which the Hall of Justice has a lot of, it's one of those like false walls, right? And adding a frame in there is is easier. It's less invasive. So that was our recommendation was, it's not on her drawing, but in that new wall, we would actually just have an interior door that could be shut and locked that the public couldn't get into. Those doors are great. I love them, but they're very expensive and they're just super practical for office use. That's kind of what they were looking at.
So still have the same one in, one out?
Yes, except for the public couldn't enter that act like they can now. I'd like to add one thing, well, actually, I would, you know, I'm asking for all of these submissions for your review, but this one specifically could be very beneficial for our Millic project. So my request to the board is a little different for the rest, which I'm asking the board to approve this for this year's budget, if possible, so that we could get started on this and get it open for use and provide some customer service front-facing counter space for all these moves that we have going on. So that is a little bit of a special request that would require, the cost doesn't make it a budget amendment, but because it's a CIP project, it would need board approval.
What's the timeline to get that project done?
Project coordinator, I have him looking into it. He's out today, so don't have a timeline. But really, just to get things going, it would be adding a window, like just to get a customer-facing interactive place that's not occurring by a courtroom. That would be the path of least resistance. I would say we would be able to get that done before some of our major moves. So in the next couple of months even, maybe even a month, we would have Twin City Glass or Ericsson. Somebody local would provide us bids and move forward with low bid.
I'm in favor of the goal. I guess I question if a person working in that room's got two doors to go through to get out of there. I don't know if that's more secure or more hazard.
Right, if we added that door on the interior.
What if that window was a, was a door where the top half opens?
Yeah.
It's like a window it is, but the bottom half would be, bottom half of a door.
What we could do, and I don't disagree, we could have Twin City give us both price options and, and, you know, see if it's a reasonable request or bring it to the board and let, you know. But I, I don't disagree with you on that.
I guess, I don't know, whatever they're comfortable with.
And some of the other considerations for a window from a door are the utilities within the wall, the plumbing and electrical and rerouting of that. A window would make that much more easier than a full opening of a door.
Which is why you were saying that that fake wall would be easiest to punch that through because there's.
Yeah, in a building like that where so much is concrete, it, it's a lot easier to do a window over a door, plus when you're talking about flooring matching, when you're doing a door, you're having to patch in. You know, so just as far as path of least resistance, it's easier for us to do it with the, the wall in the door, the newly constructed wall. Now, if we're talking about safety and security, though, I mean, that kind of does change, you know, it does change things. So if the intent was for them to have two access points, you know, then that makes sense to have a little bit bigger of a project.
I guess my other thought, because I've used that facilitating room, is if you have a false wall in there, is the privacy issues of somebody sitting in there, having to discuss their marriage relationship and going through the, the problems and having somebody on the other side of the wall who can hear everything that's going on.
So the, the public ask, access point would only be to complete documents related to juror questionnaires or research. The, the room across the hall is the private conference room where attorneys would have those types of conversations. So it's the room, so it's same spot, but it's the conference room right across from what you're describing. What I'll do is we'll go through all of them and I'll probably make my official request for this project review for this specific one after we're done. That's okay.
So do we only typically choose one of these?
No, they're all five within budget. So we'll keep going and we'll, if that's okay, and we'll just kind of have a wrap-up discussion afterwards. That's okay. Okay. Okay, we're gonna, if we want to go to the next one, Kelly. So this, the last three submissions are from the juvenile department. And this one is an estimated cost of $33,000. And the initial submission was actually just to replace the carpet in the atrium area. When we started looking into it from a facility standpoint, you know, you're, it was a Band-Aid. What, what was causing the carpet flooring to become disgusting was a leak in, in that atrium roof. So part of the submission, we revised it to say, if you want new flooring, you have to repair the leak first. Then we'll, then we'll, you know, look into new flooring. And so that's why it's a $33,000 cost, because it's not just a flooring replacement. It is a, it's a leak repair, roof repair. We don't need to have to, we don't have to engineer it or anything. We'll just be replacing it. And then the new flooring we would put in and recommend is a, you know, an outdoor, because it is indoor/outdoor space. So that one was ranked number three by the group, and again, put forward by the juvenile department. I have some other pictures, I think, of just the carpet and then, yeah, so that's the entrance there. Some pictures of the roof where the seams have failed, and so we'll be repairing that, making sure it's watertight.
I take it the damaged flooring is covered up by those throw carpets?
Yep. Yes. Okay. This is the next one put forward by the juvenile department. This is for the lobby and courtroom flooring. And then included in that is actually a seating replacement as well, which is part of the reason why the cost is pretty high at $43,000. That's just a picture of the carpet that's currently in the general lobby, which I believe all three of the board members have, have been through the facility. It is original to its construction. It's worn and we need to, they would like to replace it. We can probably go to the next one. This is courtroom, same carpet. And then at some point in time, they did replace, looks like the front entrance carpet, likely because it was damaged from the roof leak, and so they continued it forward. Okay. The last project is also from juvenile, as I mentioned before. This is the juvenile shed rehab project, we're calling it. This shed is at the south side of the juvenile facility campus. If you look to the right, that's where we have WSU and the greenhouse, and we have also, I believe, a couple other small building, like shed buildings. It's in, it's in need of repair. And so if we're gonna continue to use this as a, as a storage area, we'll need to do some modifications and repairs. And so the proposal is to repair the roof, replace the damaged siding, and, and repair that front entrance, entrance lane, too. It's got rotted wood that needs to be replaced for stability. The cost that we estimate, again, it's an estimation, is about $20,000. And the next slide is just our project estimates and, and what our budget is for this line item, which is $150,000 for next year. But our total estimates come in at about a 153. In our experience as a team, some estimates come, or some projects end up lower, and of course, some end up higher. I think we'd feel comfortable at 153,000 going forward if they're all approved. I think we'll have the budget capacity, just kind of based off of our past practice with these smaller projects. Again, my request today would, would be if the board would, at your pleasure, approve the HOJ jury office, which is essentially just adding that win. the HOJ jury office, which is essentially just adding that window slash door, so we can get moving on that one to kind of accommodate some hotel space that would be great for. And you don't have to, the board does not have to approve these projects today. These will all be in the budgetary, you know, we'll have continued discussions. And if the board would like us to include them in next year's budget, we will do that.
Well, you're asking for the one today.
I am asking for the one today. Correct. For the $14,300. Okay. Thank you. So that really leaves the remaining four. How would you guys like us, do you want us to come back? Or would you like us to just continue in the budget process?
I'd like to have a conversation about the, the youth facility expenses.
Okay.
Well, then I would say just put it in the budget process, because that'll be the conversation time.
Okay. We can do that.
Maybe the meeting when we talk about the facility five-year plan, we can talk about these at that time as well?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We can talk about it during our facilities five-year plan and the budget process as well. So there'll be ample opportunity to go over them. No problem. And that was everything on our list. We have miscellaneous if the board wanted to trust anything else.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we don't have the next till 2:30, so we got a, got a few minutes. We can get recess till 2:30. Okay.
Okay, we'll come out of recess. We're at two thirty and we have the Sheriff's Department. Is it Troy?
Deputy Fisher for Bryanville, Chief Criminal Deputy with the Sheriff's Office.
Make sure the little green light on your speaker is on. There you go. Thank you.
Hopefully I can make this work today. I'm here to request approval for a technology replacement fund for the Sheriff's Office. We have a number of items that are on a replacement cycle that we have to update every so often. Two items that we currently have funding for are portable radios and those are funded at twenty-two thousand five hundred a year, which is actually managed by Public Works. That is a ten-year cycle. And our mobile data terminals are laptops that we take everywhere on a five-year cycle, currently funded at seventy-two thousand a year, but that is done through the IT department. What we're looking for is to have control over these items, to put a few more of our items that we know we have to replace on a set schedule into this fund so that we can have a budget that is stable and predictable. The first item again is our mobile data terminals. These have a five-year lifecycle. We currently use Dell semi-rugged laptops, which now serve as both the vehicle computer and our office computer. So that saves us some money on hardware. Some other hardware we use with these includes vehicle mounts, which actually mount to the frame of the vehicle, the vehicle docks that these rest in and have all the connections. We have scanners and printers and we have USB docks for office use. We've saved money on the last two replacement cycles by reusing the mounts. That'll be fifteen years on those vehicle mounts on some of the vehicles, not likely to go beyond that next time. And we're going on our second cycle of reusing the laptop docks in the vehicles. We're doing that by ordering a set of shims for every vehicle, which is significantly less money than buying a new dock. If we change to a different platform in the future after this replacement cycle, which is just now being ordered in 2025, or if there's a change to how the vehicles are manufactured, we may need new vehicle mounts and we'll also need new vehicle docks. Again, this is currently funded at seventy-two thousand annually. The next is our portable radios. These were purchased in 2018 on a ten-year replacement cycle due to be replaced in 2028. The previous fund was set up for a VHF-only portable radio at 2018 prices. There was no escalator built in. And that amount was twenty-two thousand five hundred a year, which would raise two hundred twenty-five thousand by 2028. I am pushing for us to go to tri-band radios when we upgrade. That will allow us to speak to all of our neighboring counties, whether it is local, state, or federal resources. During a natural disaster, if you have those other agencies involved or if you have something like the situation in Chalene County where they have a manhunt going, where they're using everything, including military, it's important to have real-time communications. So tri-band radios would do that, but they are much more expensive. So to upgrade to that at 2028 prices, what I can project based off of last year's estimate would be about six hundred thousand. To help catch up for that funding, we transferred one hundred sixty-five thousand from last year's budget. If we were to contribute an additional hundred thousand each year, we will be able to upgrade to tri-band radios. We also have some savings in our, from those MDT purchases where we didn't have to use all of it. That could also be used to build this up faster. The next item is our mobile and body worn camera system. Notice when I was talking to Mike Moss that I have several of these items on me today. In 2022, we launched our WatchGuard video system. Deputies now have both mobile and body worn cameras. And these were purchased on a five-year contract with grant funding from a state legislative impact fund for the amount of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that contract covers cloud-based video and digital evidence storage for the Sheriff's Office. Earlier this year, I got board approval for a three-year contract extension for this system beginning in 2027, which will cost approximately sixty-three thousand five hundred per year. That extension will give us one more refresh on the body cameras. These take a beating. They get worked over if we're having to wrestle somebody into cuffs or they fall off and hit the pavement. So they will refresh those in 2027, but we will continue to use the same vehicle cameras, the mobile cameras to achieve more savings and that will get us through the next three years from 2027. So by 2030, we will need to look at purchasing a new system. That is going to be an expense to prepare for based on what I've seen other agencies purchase recently.
And Troy, was that contract extension the one where they gave it to us at the same price?
No, this was, this is a fairly low price for it's the three years. Again, they're going to give us new body worn cameras. We're going to keep using the dash cameras that we have and we're going to maintain our upload server and the cloud storage that they offer us. I know of a smaller department that's less than a third our size, probably using about a quarter of the equipment that we do and they're paying a per-year price of a hundred thousand a year with a competitor. So that for us is a huge savings right now. We can extend the life of these items for a few more years.
I think that contract extension you were talking about, wasn't that the radios at the time?
I know there was a contract that you extended.
No, it was for the video system. There might have been a different topic, but the one that I presented was the camera system. Make sure this is displaying right. The next item is our TASER Conducted Energy Weapons. These are part of our less lethal platform. We recently updated to the TASER ten platform from Axon. Axon is really the only game in town when it comes to conducted energy weapons. This purchase was a five-year contract covering hardware and software. That purchase was made with budget savings in 2024 at a cost of two hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred one dollars and sixty-one cents. We will need to refresh this platform in approximately five years. We should be able to cover that replacement at funding of sixty thousand dollars per year. A couple of the smaller items include our unmanned aerial systems. We have multiple UAS, which I just referred to as drones, and drone operators. These vary from small indoor units to mid-sized outdoor units and larger weather rated outdoor units. The outdoor units come with powerful camera systems and these provide us a real-time aerial view of a situation. The drones have an average lifespan of about three years. They have a lot of wear and tear and we get damage. Wind and trees are the enemy of drones. We spend on average about ten thousand dollars per year on the UAS program. Another item is our digital forensics platform. The Sheriff's Office has a powerful investigative computer for digital forensics cases. Our detectives receive specialized training and use forensic software in these investigations. Digital forensics investigations typically involve searching cell phones and computers for evidence of crimes. This evidence helps successfully prosecute major cases such as homicides and crimes against children. Routine hardware updates are needed to keep up with the increasing amounts of data processed during these investigations. And hardware and software costs are expected to be approximately ten thousand dollars per year for the digital forensics program. Some of the software they use is very specialized and it has to be purchased on a subscription basis. And the final item we have, this is kind of a neat one. It's called the Star Chase GPS tracking system. This is a vehicle-based GPS launcher. It deploys a tracker to fleeing vehicles. If we know that somebody is likely to flee and we can launch one of these, it's got a sticky head on it. It'll stick to their, in this case, their tailgate or their bumper, whatever it hits, their license plate. We've had them stuck there. Doesn't do any damage, but it has a live cellular connection with GPS and we can terminate that pursuit and use it to find them later without continuing pursuit. We have several of these units which were purchased with a WASPIC grant, but we do have ongoing software subscription costs of approximately fifteen thousand one hundred dollars per year. So what we're asking for approval on is this, this replacement fund to cover these expected costs, help keep things stable and predictable. We currently have the mobile data terminals at seventy-two thousand a year. We would like to keep that amount knowing that the next cycle is going to have new docks and more than likely new mounts. Our portable radios, we're asking to increase that funding from twenty-two thousand five hundred to one hundred thousand through 2028. The mobile body worn camera systems, that's a price of sixty-three thousand five hundred. That's the contract extension that begins in 2027. Our TASERS, if we put away sixty thousand dollars, we should be able to cover that in then five years from now. Our unmanned aerial systems are about a ten thousand dollar a year expense. As with our digital forensics, also ten thousand dollars. And then our subscription software for the Star Chase GPS is fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. So the total annual cost for this fund would be three hundred thirty thousand six hundred dollars. That's roughly two hundred thirty thousand and change, more than the two current ones. But these are items that we have been relying on finding money in our budget at the end of the year if we're lucky and we'd rather be prepared than hope to be lucky.
But did you say it's a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase?
Yes. Over, the only two items that are currently funded for expected replacement cycles are those portable radios and the mobile data terminals. The portable radios, there was never an escalator put in for that cost. Obviously, things have gone up and it's for a VHF-only radio. So we want to be able to serve the public as best we can in an emergency and I think the tri-band radios will be the way to do that.
What, what things came to us by a grant that now we have to take, take on the cost of?
So the first would be the, the mobile and body worn camera system. That was part of a, I think the only time in history I can think of that the state has actually given us money for new requirements they put on us. That was four hundred thirty thousand dollars. We are going to be able to extend that at a pretty good savings for another three years before we need to consider buying a new system or possibly doing a yearly subscription. There's pros and cons to it. Sometimes you can get a better price if you have the money in hand versus paying it over five years. And the Star Chase units, those were actually quite expensive. I don't remember the total. Yeah, that was covered by a WASPIC grant and what we're paying for is just the um, annual service and uh, software cost.
But I didn't catch, what was the original cost?
For the hardware?
Yeah.
For the device, okay, yeah.
How often do we deploy those?
Uh, it depends. Uh, I can tell you that during the pursuit restrictions, we were deploying them a lot. Uh, fortunately now we are able to actually uh, attempt to catch and bring people to justice. So um, but we still use them on occasion. Um, it sometimes it is a safer option if it is busy, if we're uh, coming into a populated area or a school zone. We can launch that thing and then and if it sticks to that car, we can, we can track it down and see where it stops rather than, you know, chasing it or just letting them get away.
You said if it sticks to that car. Hmm. What's the success rate of that?
Uh, it's better at slower speeds. It it's a, it is set to not damage a vehicle when it hits it. And I would presume it's also set to not damage a human if it hits them. Uh, so on the freeway, you have to get way too close for comfort. I don't like that use, but on uh, county roads, um, we actually have a pretty good rate. Um, we've had a number of these where we, we had one that I can think of that it suddenly stopped moving on the map and deputy found it a couple of blocks away. It had rolled, it kept driving poorly, even though we weren't chasing it, but it had rolled and come to a stop and our, our GPS tracker was still on it.
So it's not magnetic?
No.
Sticky surface?
It's a really gross sticky uh, head on it that it will peel off. It's kind of feels like hot melt glue. Um, and they'll will, they will replace those when we deploy them. Uh, that's covered in our our service cost. We do have times where they've, they've fallen off and uh, been damaged and that's covered in this cost.
Are all the sheriff's vehicles equipped with it?
No, I believe we have 11.
12?
Yeah, so we have a few per per patrol team. So we usually have them out there.
Okay. How do we, I come from a world where this isn't uncommon, that you have these accounts set up, you know, for replacements. Um, we would look at them at a yearly basis and the idea was to make sure we were putting away enough or, or were we overstating it or? Because the price of technology changes all the time. We were trying to keep online because I wanted to reflect pretty close to actual cost. How do we control that here or who controls that here?
Well, I think if we do that annual review to see what we've spent out of here and how close we are to our, you know, projected costs. Um, one of the things like the the mobile data terminals, that was originally, I'm trying to remember the original year it was started. It's never gone up. Um, that was originally started for the Panasonic ToughBooks, which are huge, expensive, heavy, and they were more than what we needed. So we've gone to a more affordable platform. And like I said, the last two times, um, we've saved money by repurposing our existing hardware.
Yeah.
Um, and it's.
And and that's a good example, because I I know computers themselves keep dropping in in price. So I think you need to keep control of that. Now radios, because I sit on an I-1, 1 board, I know how expensive those.
Yeah.
darn things are, and I know um, public works and there's times there where that technology is changing and we have to keep up with it. So I, I get that. I just, I'm just thinking from a county view, we, I think we need to be pretty accurate. So when you, we have audits and stuff that we, they know we're putting away what seems to be reasonable.
Yes, I I agree. And part of this is uh, so that we can maintain control over these um, funding mechanisms. We can't currently, without uh, calling the IT department or calling public works department, we don't know if the funds have been transferred each year and we don't know what the current balance is.
Yeah, and and I agree with you, Troy. I think to have your replacement cycles run by IT and by public works, I think it could be, it's more efficient for you guys to run it yourself. I I get all that. I just, I just want to have a comfort zone that when the budget comes and we're looking at a number to put there, that it's an accurate number.
Yes.
Or that it's going to at least do what we want it to do.
Yeah.
wasting time.
And I've I have uh, put these as close as I can, uh, given recent numbers that I've got, like those portables. You know, I put a uh, like a roughly 5% escalator in over the 2024 quote I got. Um, the mobile data terminals, that's based on recent purchases and previous ones where we've had to buy the docs. Um, the, the body worn cameras, that's the um, within a few dollars of the exact amount uh, that we were approved. Um, the drones and the digital forensic programs, those are based on recent costs for us. Um, the one thing where we may not need as much may be the portable radios based on if we transfer what is um, what has been saved in the last two uh, computer replacement cycles. If we transfer that in, it'll get us a lot closer to that end funding goal for 2028.
Okay.
But again, I don't have real-time access to what that balance is.
Yeah. Um, here, yeah.
There we go.
Here's a, here's a way I would ask where I'm in favor you you doing that, although I think the convinceur should get a TASER.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but I would just ask when it, when it shows up in the budget, that we have some kind of audit thing that shows us that we're on track with this? Would that be reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
People's money.
With with that, I don't have any issue with it. I don't, well, if anybody.
I remember how to turn this off. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and some farmers call drones skeet, you know that, right?
I think they should be considered that.
We got a left-handed model.
Do they have a left-handed model?
Left-handed model, yeah.
Okay, we got a couple of minutes before three, since these were advertised at, at times for people, I just would like to stay on that. So we'll just take a short recess, you good with that? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to three o'clock. We have Health and Human Services. My thing says fee scheduling contracts.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to talk about fee schedule first. Um, and as we talk about fee schedule, keep in mind, we only have fees on the health department side of HHS. So um, this does not, this does not affect um, housing and homeless funding. It does not affect veterans relief. It does not affect the opioid settlements and then it doesn't affect things like developmental disabilities and things like that. Those are completely separate and different funds. We are strictly going to talk about Fund 14301, which is the health department. So, okay. Um, so I'm going to set a little, I'm going to paint a little bit of a picture for y'all and then Gina's going to talk more about our actual fee schedule and some changes we want to make. Um, so um, just for some background, we have not increased our fees in the health department since 2019. Um, we previously had a really hefty fund balance. So logically, um, the board at the time did not, you know, uh, encourage or approve for us to raise fees. Makes sense, right? We shouldn't be charging, raising more fees when we already have money in the bank. Um, so for the same reason, um, we, we used to receive in the health department fund a general fund contribution every year. This is not an ask for general funds. Just want to put that out there. Um, but um, we used to receive between 200 and 500,000 dollars a year from the general fund to go towards health department programs. So um, that's another kind of painting the picture of where we are currently at. Um, and us, just like all other county departments, um, the past three, four, five years, we've seen a huge increase in costs. Um, I think everyone in the county um, has seen due to um, labor costs. You know, those have gone up a good um, probably 25% since 2022. So there's a huge increase in costs. And then our internal services that we pay for IT, like, you know, the risk pool, all those things have also gone up and they've gone up like 50% since 2021. So not getting where, we didn't raise our fees, our expenses are going up. And so you can see where this is going. Um, we've exhausted quite a bit of our health department fund balance. So we're, we're really here to talk about what that looks like. Um, when we submitted our budget, um, on the 11th, we had already made some changes to it. Um, we spent the last several months going line by line through our budget, looking at anything and everything that we could do. So um, some of the things that we've already done are, um, we are working to discontinue some maternal child health work that we were doing that we no longer receive grant funding for. So in doing that, the nurse that worked in that program has now transitioned into one of our vacant nurse positions that does other work. And then we will be eliminating the previous position, doing that funding, that job that's no longer funded. Um, in addition, we, when we submitted our budget, we eliminated our.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about the schedule first. And as we talk about fee schedule, keep in mind, we only have fees on the Health Department's side of HHS. So this does not, this does not affect housing and homeless funding. It does not affect veterans relief. It does not affect the opioid settlements, and then it doesn't affect things like developmental disabilities and things like that. Those are completely separate and different funds. We are strictly going to talk about Fund 14301, which is the Health Department. Okay, so I'm gonna set a little, I'm gonna paint a little bit of a picture for y'all. And then Gina's gonna talk more about our actual fee schedule and some changes we wanna make. So just for some background, we have not increased our fees in the Health Department since 2019. We previously had a really hefty fund balance, so logically, the board at the time did not, you know, encourage or approve for us to raise fees. Makes sense, right? We shouldn't be charging, raising more fees when we already have money in the bank. So for the same reason, we, we used to receive in the Health Department Fund, a general fund contribution every year. This is not an ask for general funds. Just wanna put that out there. But we used to receive between $200,000 and $500,000 a year from the general fund to go towards Health Department programs. So that's another kind of painting the picture of where we are currently at. And us, just like all other county departments, the past three, four, five years, we've seen a huge increase in costs. I think everyone in the county has seen due to labor costs, you know, those have gone up a good, probably 25% since 2022. So there's a huge increase in costs. And then our internal services that we pay for IT, like, you know, the risk pool, all those things have also gone up, and they've gone up like 50% since 2021. So not getting where, we didn't raise our fees, our expenses are going up, and so you can see where this is going. We've exhausted quite a bit of our Health Department fund balance, so we're, we're really here to talk about what that looks like. When we submitted our budget on the 11th, we had already made some changes to it. We spent the last several months going line by line through our budget, looking at anything and everything that we could do. So some of the things that we've already done are, we are working to discontinue some maternal-child health work that we were doing that we no longer receive grant funding for. So in doing that, the nurse that worked in that program has now transitioned into one of our vacant nurse positions that does other work, and then we will be eliminating the previous position doing that funding, that job that's no longer funded. In addition, we, when we submitted our budget, we eliminated our local emergency response coordinator, which has been vacant for a while. We do receive some grant funding for that, but it didn't completely cover the cost of the position. So we are eliminating that. And then right after the first of the year, we have two employees that will be retiring. And we're already implementing some plans to transition the work of those employees to other employees so that we can not fill those two positions as well. So we've already taken a lot of steps to kinda mitigate some costs, do some cost savings, and see what we can do. And we also plan to eliminate at least one or two of our motor pool vehicles to save some funds as well. And then obviously, we just like kinda funny listening to the Sheriff's Office, we're really looking at like our software licensing. We have some specific software that we use, so we're really marrying up our, our needed licenses with what we actually need, making sure there's nothing extra sitting out there that we don't necessarily need to do the job. So laying all that out there kinda shows that where our budget, you know, we're, we're making some cost savings. We need to look at fees. And so Gina's gonna take the rest of the conversation and really talk about what we want to do or what we're recommending with our fee schedule. So I'm gonna pass out a copy of it to you so you can follow along with her.
Does it have on there where your fund balance was and where it's at now? Do you know that offhand?
Um, Carol, my, this, what she's handing out is just our fee schedule.
Did you hear Rick's question?
And I don't know the answer off the top of my head. But I can tell you that in about 2019, our fund balance was probably, had hit 2 million. So.
2019, you think it was about 2 million?
Yeah, and we've just steadily seen that decrease as we've gone.
So we wanted to bring this to you today because, well, because we need to talk about it, but we also have it scheduled to be on the agenda for the Board of Health next week. So this is an interesting dynamic. The, our fee schedule has to be approved by the Board of Health, but only the elected members get to vote on it. And so it's kind of an odd scenario. We didn't decide that, but that's the process it has to go through. And so we wanted to bring it today just for presentation and discussion, and then it is on the agenda for the Board of Health next week. I think for all of you, this is probably the first time you've really seen our fee schedule. As Carol mentioned, the last time we had it approved by the board was 2019, so we've had those same fees in place since then. So it's probably kind of a lot and overwhelming. If that was your first time seeing it. So as Carol mentioned, it's, the fees that we have in place are primarily for our Vital Records program and our Environmental Health programs. Those are our, our fee services. And the copy you have is a red, sort of a redline version. Overall, we're proposing about a 5% increase to our fees. So it's where you see the two columns on the right, the 2025 fee, so that's what it currently is and what it has been since 2019. And then what the new fee amount would be with about a 5% increase. There was a tiny bit of rounding down or up to keep kind of some even numbers in there, so that's why I say about 5%. We have some language changes, some cleaning up to do. I'm gonna highlight some of the bigger, I guess, we have a couple of additions that we're proposing as well. In Vital Records, we're proposing a couple of new fees. A, I think the most frequent one that we would see is just a processing fee of $5. Our Vital Records fees are set by the state primarily, so the $25 fees you see for birth certificate, death certificate, that's set by the state. We have to send, I think it's $13 goes, of that goes to the state, and then we keep $12 for the work we do in processing those. We've seen a lot of changes with the information we have to verify in order to issue some of those things because of legislative changes. And so it's taking more time. It's costing us more to do those things, and so that's why we're proposing a $5 processing fee. So if someone were to come to get their, their birth certificate, it would cost them $30 instead of $25. So that's a new piece there. Under water recreation, we added a fee because we just saw this very recently. Spray park with recirculation permit. It's a little more in-depth of review and processes in, in that sense. And so we didn't have a fee for that, and so we have added that, or we're proposing to add that on here.
What does that mean with recirculation?
So it's reusing the water, so it's like treating and reusing. So like the Catlin Spray Park is what we, we were involved in here recently. And so it's treating and recirculating the water.
Literally, what it, okay.
Previously, it was not circulating. It was non-circulating, so they did not reuse the water.
Wow, so all of it that was spraying in the air was just going right straight in the sewer? Whoa, okay.
I think that's why it was kinda, hasn't it been shut down a couple of years? Cause they were going through the process of bringing that back up to speed, and they just got it.
Yeah, yeah. And I actually, on my way over here, there's a ton of people in there using it, right?
I know, I was at Elsal last night, and they were saying it didn't take long, and a lot of kids were out playing.
Yeah, there was quite a few people in there, so.
So it'll be a busy next few days then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Be warm, just in time. Let's see, under temporary food, we've just kind of cleaned up where we had, we had a fast track surcharge and kind of had a couple different options there. We're just cleaning that up to have one instead of multiple. Let's see, we are proposing, and I apologize, this didn't get highlighted in red. Under drinking water, a group A and B systems. We have, for several years, we've received some group B funding from the state. We actually just talked about this a few weeks ago. We are still receiving some of that funding from the state, but it has been reduced. And so we are proposing to reinstate a group B fee, which we, we had prior to receiving the state funding. And then when we received the state funding, we brought that down to zero. And because we've seen a reduction in that, we're proposing to bring part of the fee, I'm gonna say part of the fee back, because it's not, it used to be, I think, $240, and so we're just proposing a $100 fee on that one. Um, let's see. Some other language changes here are, under other onsite wastewater, we are proposing a newer reinstatement fee for OSS professional licenses. And what we have had previously is just a, a fee for your OSS professional license. They have to go through us to get to be licensed. And what we've, we're finding is folks were letting their license expire, not sort of renewing them at the new year, but letting them expire. When we, when they do that, we have to remove them off of all of our information that says that they're a licensed professional. And, and then a few months down the road, when they, you know, get their first job of the year, they'll come to us to reinstate it. And we have to add them back on all of our stuff. And so what we're proposing is to kind of separate that out. So there's a lower, just a renewal fee, and then a slightly higher new or reinstatement fee, just to help cover some of that additional work that it takes for us to either take down or put back on or get on all of our information. Let's see, and then under solid waste, we added some language about prorating fees. Kind of, we wanted to offer this similar to how we do our restaurant permits, where if you apply partway through the year, we would prorate the fee for you. So we have it kind of split into quarter increments. So if you apply for your permit halfway through the year, you would only pay, you know, half of an annual permit cost. So we wanted to add that in there to offer that for solid waste facility permits. And then we had quite a bit of cleanup. We did under campgrounds. A few years back, we made some changes to our campground code. So we're aligning some of that language with the campground code that was adopted a couple of years ago. And then we've readjusted our fees here. We actually, if you compare the 25 to our proposed 26, this one is sort of going down a little bit. So we did, when our code changed, we did some analysis of hours and work and time and all of that, that, the time it takes us to do the campground inspections and applications. And so we've adjusted the fees based on timing. So those are the big changes. I think, like I said, overall, we're proposing about a 5% increase to our fees kind of across the board to help us cover the cost of our services. And just a couple additions and cleanup language, so.
What, what percentage of your budget is made up with fees? Like, for example, building and planning, I know we run building and planning basically off fees. What would you say percentage runs? And the other question I, I, I had is, I know landfill pays you, but it's capped at the 450. And that, I mean, we hit that cap before the end of the year, right? So I, I mean, you can change the fees, it just means they hit the cap faster. I mean, the dollar amount's the same, right?
And we didn't actually change that fee. That fee remains at.
Okay, so that, that's a separate line item than the ones down below.
Correct, and we did not increase that line item. And we hit that cap at about September every year.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I was reading, I was seeing the other stuff down there.
And do you know, I know it doesn't equate to a, just a straight 5% increase because you've added some, but do you know what it's actually gonna add to your budget based on like last year's numbers, the things that you've added?
Could we determine? I know, I'm trying to, we had several scenarios we were looking at based on some of the changes we've made to our budget and these fee changes. No.
Blanking on how much that was.
No, but we have that.
We do.
So go back under solid waste again. So the first one, not the exemption one, but I, the, that 450, that applies to our landfill. Do the next two apply to our landfill? Or are these applied to waste control? The person we have that actually collects, or do we know?
So the solid waste facility post-closure care permit lines, those actually apply to the tenant way landfill because we feel responsible for that. Yes.
Okay. And on that same budget area there, it says solid waste facility modification hourly rate? So that's 150 bucks an hour? For the permit modification, cell construction?
Yeah, so if a solid waste facility, correct me if I'm wrong here, Carol. If they have changes they need to make to an existing permit, and we have to review, you know, the, the changes and what have you, sometimes might be going onsite or not, so we would just charge the hourly rate, an hourly rate for that work.
Sometimes there's also a lot of back and forth with the Department of Ecology on those. And an example of when we would use the line that says new facility construction or review, the divert facility there in.
Yeah, in the valley complex, yeah.
Yeah, we spent, gosh, a lot of time helping, not helping, reviewing their application, going back and forth on the specifications. It gets really into the nitty gritty of how, how it operates, what they're going to do with their waste, those types of things. So environmental health staff, we're involved a lot in reviewing that application with the Department of Ecology.
Yeah. Well, I, I, you guys know I'm not a big fan of increasing fees, but I don't see anything. I think you've been, it's been 2019. I understand costs have risen, and I think you've been pretty reasonable with it. The two questions I would, I would like answered when it comes to Board of Health, I'd like to know what the, where the fund balance went down to. I know we've used it, I just like, and I appreciate you using it instead of just charging right off the bat and hanging on to it. The other thing I would like to know is what percentage of your budget is the actual fees?
We do have that addition. Bring it, we can bring that to Board of Health.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, Chairman. I'm really not a fee guy, cause they're just taxes ultimately. But I think that what you guys have done is pretty modest, given the circumstances. I think it's.
Been seven years, and we're talking about 5%. I think that's pretty reasonable. I've seen a lot of you do that on a monthly basis. Well, Rick, shut up. You're gonna make the paper again.
Okay, we'll bring those answers back to Board of Health next week, and certainly if you think of more questions before, then let us know, and we're happy to bring more additional information then as well.
Okay.
And then for the contracts piece, I just wanted to kind of give a general update on where we're at with our state contracts and what we, what we have, what we don't have, just to give you a heads up of sort of what's coming in the near future. So we have received from the state our Consolidated Homeless Grants. We've also received our Developmental Disabilities Contract from the state. And so we have our pass-through contracts drafted and going through that process now, and hopefully off to legal soon. Once we get those back, we'll get them scheduled for a Tuesday meeting. So those ones will be coming up sooner than later.
Well, I saw the homeless one because they always send it.
They do a document, yeah.
I know, and it's a, it's the one we've talked about, over 11 million. Do you, you know what we spent last year?
Yeah, last year we spent around 5 million. The grant was about 8, 8 million.
In 2024, we were right around.
And that was for a two-year period, the last biennium.
And when I first came on, it was about 4.6. Any idea what we spent back then? I'm trying to get an idea of what we've been spending over the years.
Yeah, not off the top of my head, but.
In fact, you know, if you, if, if you don't mind, when you bring those up, if I could have like the last five years, what we spent on that, that thing, if that's okay?
Well, I can tell you also, Chairman, that I read an article that said that our homeless rate has been stable at around 330 throughout the county for the last five years. So it hasn't gone up and it hasn't gone down. I think that it's interesting that the word that was used, the wording was, our housing population has been stable at around 330.
Yeah, certainly not. From '23 to '24 statewide, we're up about 12. we're up about 12, from data that that I was able to to glean, we're up 12 and a half percent. We're the third highest. We're only behind California and New York.
Are you looking at point in time count data?
I think so. I don't know, I I just took this data and wherever they get it, get it from. I haven't, and I'll say right up front, I haven't dug in and verified everything, but I imagine it's the same data they use for every state.
Yeah, it's, it's probably point in time count data. And I'm happy, I could talk for days about the point in time count and some.
And chronic.
Things I have with it.
Chronic homelessness, we say define as over one year homeless or repeatedly in a four-year period. We're number one. Forty-nine percent of our people are classified as that.
In Washington?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I, and I, they blast me before, but I'll say it again. We've spent $5 billion on homeless, 80% of that in the last two, two budget bienniums up there. And if you define success as growing problem, then we're, we're more successful than all the United States. But I question if, and I'll continue to question if how we're using those funds is the best way to use it. And I'm not arguing about how much we get in that. I'm just, I, I'm, I, I'm questioning if it's, we're using it the best way because it doesn't seem to be fixing the problem.
Well, and especially if, like I was telling you, that article stated that the the housing numbers have been stable at 330 or whatever, I think it was 330. It hasn't gone down, so we're spending more money.
And we threw $5 billion of taxpayer money at it.
Well, it would be, for me, it would be helpful to have how much money has been available to us over the last five or six years? How much of it have we spent out of that available money each year? And then if the population hasn't changed, if the numbers of homeless people is stable, how much more have we spent? Where did it go? Different from one year to the next?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, that's a, a good point because there, when you read some of the stuff out there, that, to me, there's a misconception of what you can use that for.
Very much.
Because I, I know it comes with a lot of restrictions and it's, most of it's a reimbursement and you can only reimburse certain things. And the words we get is, well, it's like we can just write a check and send it to somebody. And that's not the case. So I, I think a little bit of discussion on the parameters that, that we're, we're within, that we have to stay within, is probably warranted because there seems to be a conception that we can just do willy nilly with it, whatever we want. And that's really not the case.
Yeah, well, in one case, somebody who believes that we can just write a check to the city of Longview and they can hire more police and more firemen, which is completely out of line because you can't use that money for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's misconceptions on both sides. I think there's also a misconception that, you know, oh, we have 120 NGOs in our county and the county's funding all of them. Well, no, we're actually not, you know. So there's, on both sides of the argument, I think that there's a lot of things that can be cleared up so that people have a better understanding of how it actually works and what we're actually spending money on.
Yeah.
Well, good luck.
Yeah. I think what I'm, I'm trying to convey, bottom line is there's been some press and whatnot on, on this. It probably, it has potential to be a lively conversation. So I think the more data and accurate data we have would, would be warranted.
Yeah, and I know, I think you and I have some time scheduled tomorrow. I've met with other commissioners too, just to make sure we get the right information out and can answer questions and things. So I look forward to more conversation about that. I will, I'm just gonna make a plug to, or a caution. If you're looking at point in time, and I know you'd mentioned the 330 stable number, that comes from the point in time count. One thing to keep in mind when you're looking at those numbers, it includes shelter projects and it includes unsheltered individuals. But when a community adds a shelter project, so for example, a few years back, Community House added the chess facility. So that was, I'm just, I'm making this up. That was, you know, 50 additional people in that facility. Well, that increases our point in time count numbers, right? So that's, those projects are all included in our point in time count. So when a community has new projects like that, emergency shelter and transitional housing projects, and they get included in that point in time count number. So it could look like those numbers are going up because communities have added like a transitional housing or a shelter type project. So that's my, my caution about point in time count numbers. It's just to keep in mind that it may not actually be that it's going up, but that new projects have been added in communities. And so that makes it go up, which I'm guessing why Washington numbers probably look super high because they've, as a state, I think, have added a ton of emergency shelter projects. And those all get counted as part of that point in time count. I'm gonna get off my soapbox on that.
Well, you know, even when you look at it, and so you're thinking point in time, are you, are you telling me that it's possible that they're inflated or they're underreported? Or, or it's just not a number we can rely on?
I think it's that. I think it's not quite a number we can rely on because there's a lot of variables. And, you know, we have, you know, 50 new people were staying in shelter and they get counted in the point in time count. Would those 50 people have been counted in the point in time count if otherwise? I don't know. I mean, that's a good question.
Yeah, I wonder how we get a number because this is, you know, this is specific. 31,554 is the count in 2024. Well, if we're spending $5 billion on 31,000 people, that's a tremendous amount of money.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I don't know how you get a real accurate number there.
The people in Community House be part of that count?
Yes, they get counted.
And, and Camp Hope?
Yes, but with that project, individuals staying there are counted in our unsheltered count.
Okay.
So is it just with the capacity that that project has to possibly hold that many people? Or do they actually have to be in the project? And they could be counted like three times if they're, you know, utilizing three different services?
The data is completely unduplicated. And so someone staying in a project wouldn't be counted elsewhere if they happen to be out and run into somebody doing a survey or something, unless they gave false information. But it's only projects that are using the homeless management information system that are counted in the point in time count unless they voluntarily do surveys to help count projects.
Let me, it's only the project? So like if there's 50 houses in Camp Hope, do they count 50, whether, even if there's only 30 people in there?
No, so they'll, they'll pull what happens at the state level. If the, if a project is using the homeless management information system, like Hope Village and Community House uses and Emergency Support Shelter, they all use the HMIS system. The state pulls the data from who's active in that project on the day of the point in time count. So it's counting the individual people who are actually in that project.
Okay.
So it's not just counting like their capacity or their beds. It is counting individual people who are there that night of the point in time count.
That seems pretty arbitrary because there could be a lot of factors that would affect that one way or the other, depending on what day you're supposed to do that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of factors that play into it.
You know, we had Janice House in, was it yesterday, yesterday? And the number they gave us, they're serving, and they run, what'd they say, 12 to 24 in age? And they're serving right now 74. People within that, that range, is that part of the count? Or is the, does it, on that day that the count happens, people have to choose to participate?
So if they're under 18, they're not counted in, we don't do individual surveys with under 18. If, like if Janice House, they have some projects where, like they have rapid rehousing project, and I know they use HMIS for it, those individuals would be counted.
Okay.
But they're unaccompanied minors aren't counted in the point in time count.
So, so that I, so for clarification purposes, let's use the Janice House. They're currently not receiving the same amount of funding that the, the, the main five that we're issuing money to, the service providers that we're issuing money to. As commissioners, can we decide to increase the funding to any one of those? Like, for example, you said the Janice House isn't included in that, in that count. But if we decided to increase the funding to them, we can do that. If it falls within the guidelines that are written within that, that grant.
Yeah, the board could decide who to allocate that funding to, which agencies for sure. It, that may not directly correlate with whether they're counted or not because they, because of the population they serve, doesn't, unaccompanied minors don't get counted in the point in time count. So it may count some of the individuals depending on what, what they're doing. But it may not capture all because of that unaccompanied minor piece.
And is that the sole system that they use to determine how much money we get with these grants?
No, no. The point in time number is not connected to our grant funding, from my understanding.
What determines that amount?
Part of it is document recording fees, population, our poverty levels, those types of things. They also, for some of our funding, they look at our, like for the HEN funding, they look at who's ineligible in our community, that kind of thing.
I can tell you what Department of Commerce said to another county. They said, in that kind of answer, or alludes to that question, I'm writing to you today regarding the fund available for said county under the consolidated Homer's Grant. Commerce awards CHD funds to communities using a formula with a foundation based on need and recent actual spending. As a, as a long planned rebalancing process, Commerce intends to review the final 23, 25 spending and needs in every county starting in the fall and maybe re- reallocate from there. So they have some kind of formula. I don't know what all the data in their formula. Yeah.
The fallacy that I see in that is the relating need to spending. You can overspend, you know, way more than what the actual need is because you're just overspending and that doesn't reflect it with the need.
Yeah, and, and then in, 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 in my view, if it's actually working, the actual, the spending should be going down. I mean, that's how I would define success is, hey, I spent $2 million in this county last year. Hey, we've made some progress. I only need to spend a million and a half this year. That would be success.
Yeah, it should be, there should be a per capita, how many people are you helping, at what cost? And, and last year should be, this year should be less than last year.
Being rewarded for growing the situation is really not the right direction.
Well, yeah, the other way is, we spent this much money, look how much it did for this many people. Let's double it for next year, even though you got half the people.
So the homeless, the homeless for the population is not included in that formula then?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I know that the state uses that point in time number when they submit their application to HUD. They submit every year for funding to HUD. And I know they use that number in that application. We don't get that funding, that funding doesn't come to us in this contract. It's different funding. That's as far as I'm aware of it. But I don't know the, the formula, the magic formula that they use. My understanding was.
Probably tops.
Yes.
Daily news, I'm being facetious.
Yeah, so I look forward to more conversation on that.
I just, and I would just caution you again, or I'm not cautioning, I'm just telling you I'd be well prepared because it's, it's, it could be a lively conversation, which is fine.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Okay, so that one and our developmental disabilities contract will be coming up. We've not yet received our criminal justice treatment account contract. The state reached out and said, we're really backlogged, we're working on it. We don't have it ready yet. And so we don't know the status really of that one, except it's late. And then our CDBG Public Services Grant, we don't yet have it, but we're getting rumblings that it's coming. So what we'll do with that one is schedule a public hearing. So we have to always have a public hearing with this grant where we close out last year's and consider next year's. And so you'll see that coming. It has to be noticed, I think, for either 14 or maybe 30 days notice. And so you'll have plenty of time to know when that's coming.
I apologize, I'm going back to, to fees because something just, just triggered me. I, I actually looked at a note I put down. I know we get out of document fees, we get a, a small, I think it's a dollar or something that goes to preservation of vital records or something of that sort.
The auditor, I think.
Yeah, and it goes to the auditor, but it's available to any place. Would any of your stuff fit in there? Do you know to help with that? Because it's, it's built up a, a balance and.
Oh, that fund?
Yeah, and if it's usable, I, I guess the, the term viral records is what triggered it for me. I don't know if it means these type of viral records.
Okay.
But it's just, it's just a, a thought that there is a fund that we do collect through document recording fees that somehow associates with viral records.
Interesting, yeah, we'll have to look at that. I'm not sure either. Yeah, okay.
And I could be way off of what you could use it for, but.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. All we had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I, I did want to just bring up real quick, I got an email from the Fish Recovery Board that the pro, the budget that we had proposed to the federal government for 2026 did get approved. And so now we're waiting on NOAA to disperse those funds. If they don't get them out by a deadline, they're gonna have to, we're not gonna be able to do the projects that we had. But there are projects here in Collins County that are gonna be taking place with the Fish Recovery Board that they're gonna be working on.
I'm looking forward to having them in, in again. That was a, and I didn't really converse most, I was just taking in all the information that we were being told. I thought it was very interesting, so it'll be, be fun to have them in again.
It's gonna be, hopefully, we can get those funds and get some of these projects started. They're really working with the fishing game and the Department of Ecology on some of them. To, we're working on improving the salmon numbers and the habitat as opposed to, you know, shutting them down, shutting down patries and that kind of stuff, so.
No, absolutely, absolutely. All good? Okay, we will adjourn, thank you.